Okay, good evening and welcome to the June 3 meeting of the governing body. If you will give your atten-- I'll call this meeting to order. If you will give your attention to Deputy Mayor Kell, who will provide the invocation. Stand as you are able and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. We're in a time of turmoil, misunderstanding, outright hate. In the words of Bob Marley, "One love, one heart, let's get together and feel alright." Hate and misunderstanding can be tied to a lack of knowledge. People hate what they don't know, whether it be political, racial, sexual orientation, or others. We aren't that different in our day-to-day lives. Open your heart and open your mind. Educate yourself through immersion, communicate with other people of the other side, try new things, read factual information, and ask tough questions. Don't teach hate and spread hate. Show love, compassion, empathy, willingness to understand. Most of all, respect that of others who have different ideas, values, and perspectives compared to you. Finally, I quote the legendary Jackie Moon, "Everybody love everybody."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where its stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its throne.
Thank you. Well, now proceed with the roll call. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Akala.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Kell.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hofer.
Here.
All right, we have 10 present.
We have two proclamations for this evening, and the first will be to recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Look ahead, Ann Williams, join me up here. Fine. I'm usually not hard to hear. Well, thank you for this indulgence. I'd like to be able to present this proclamation. This is something that I've been able to participate in over many years, starting as a councilman. This is a good effort. It's an effort that we all can take part in, and it doesn't mean that you have to do anything special, but you have to be considerate of others, know when to step in when violence is potentially going to hurt someone in our community. Doesn't mean you get in front of anybody, but it means that you keep an eye out for each other. And that's how you prevent some of the violence that escalates into gun violence, is some understanding of others. So, on behalf of this, a proclamation by the mayor. Whereas every day, 125 people in the United States are killed by gun violence, and more than 260 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 19,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas people in the United States are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other income countries, high-income countries. Whereas in Kansas, there is an average of 473 gun deaths every year, with a rate of five deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state $5.7 billion each year, of which $95.1 million is paid by taxpayers. Kansas has the 19th highest rate of gun deaths in the United States. And whereas gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities, with more than half of all gun homicides in the nation occurring in 42 cities, and whereas cities across the nation, including Topeka, are working to end that senseless violence with evidence-based solutions, and whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever, as we see gun violence continue to impact communities across the country, and whereas Haidia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15, and people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day by wearing orange to pay tribute to Haidia Pendleton and other victims of gun violence. And now therefore I, Michael A. Padilla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, do proclaim June 6, 2025, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Topeka, Kansas. I encourage all Topeka citizens to support the community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives and to encourage responsible gun ownership and to help all communities safe. And witness whereof, I, Michael A. Padilla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby affix my official signature and official seal of the City of Topeka, Kansas, on this day of June 3, 2025. So, if I could ask, if you would like to make some comments? Fine. I'll let you accept the proclamation. If you wish to speak, that's fine, you don't have to.
No, there's-- you explain everything.
Okay. I think that usually wants to get a picture of all of us together. Let me stand behind you.
Everyone, big smiles. Three, two, oh, there you go. Perfect, hold it. Three, two.
If I could have Mr. William Nagier join me up here. This is our second proclamation for the evening, something we have done before, and I'm proud to be able to continue to do that. Will? Good to see you. Anybody up here?
Retreat for tonight.
No.
Thank you.
Again, this is a good opportunity for me to speak about gay pride and National Pride Month. It's important for us to be aware of all of our citizens and their value to our community. Nobody is lesser of a value to our community just because they're different than us in many ways. We're all different in some ways. So this is a good opportunity to express that. Proclamation by the mayor. Whereas across the United States, the month of June commemorates the June 1969 uprising of members of the LGBTQ1A+ community against harassment targeted against them because of their gender identity, sexual orientation, and gender expression. And whereas the LGBTQIA+ continue to strengthen the fabric of American society, there are many well-respected LGBTQIA+ leaders in all professional fields, including the arts, government, and business communities. The determination and dedication of the LGBTQIA+ rights movement and more LGBTQIA+ Americans are having their lives openly today, living their lives openly today than ever before. And whereas all people are born and created equal in human dignity and civil rights, and LGBTQIA+ individuals have made great progress in being recognized in their equal human dignity and civil rights, but there is further progress to be made. And whereas the City of Topeka Municipal Code declares that all people shall be free from discrimination because of their actual or perceived age, color, disability, familial status, gender identity, genetic information, national origin or ancestry, race, religion, sex, sexual orientation, or veteran status, and whereas recognizing Pride Month furthers awareness of the LGBTQIA+ community in Topeka and beyond, our community is and is in an opportunity to engage more with LGBTQIA+ people and their history. And whereas the rainbow flag represents light, healing, sun, calmness, art, and spirit, as long as the promise of equality for all remains unfulfilled, all Americans are affected. If we can work together to advance the principles upon which our nation was founded, every American will benefit. I now therefore, Michael A. Padilla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, do hereby proclaim June 2025 as National Pride Month in the City of Topeka, Kansas. And witness whereof, I, Michael A. Padilla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby affix my official signature and official seal of the City of Topeka, Kansas, on this day of June 3, 2025. So. Will, if you want to accept this, and if you or any of your group that likes to make a comment, you can do so.
Sorry, I'm a little tall. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this proclamation, but I also want to introduce our team that makes everything go smoothly for our Pride Palooza, which is happening June 22nd, Saturday, June 22nd, at Evergy Plaza, starting at, I believe, 5 o'clock?
6:00.
Or 6:00, 6:00 PM. See, this is the team that makes it happen. So we have our board, June 24 first, and we have our board members here, Jackie, Will, Josh, Carley, have done a phenomenal job to make sure that we have an amazing Pride Palooza. We have all sorts of community partners in Topeka that are having events as well throughout the month. You can check those out on our Facebook page or our Instagram page. If you happen to know of any events that aren't listed, please let us know, and we'll get that out there. Now more than ever, this month is extremely important for our community. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your courage. While other mayors have cowered and have decided not to proclaim this month, we want to thank you for your courage in proclaiming this month and showing the support to our community. I speak for our board on thanking you for your leadership. So, thank you so much. We'll see you at Pride Palooza again June 21st at 6:00 on Evergy Plaza. We'll have all sorts of different performers. We even have a drag queen who is known for being a Taylor Swift illusionist that will be coming in on that night as well, Lana Lux from Kansas City. So, we are super excited and hope to see you there. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Colors, colors. for appointments.
Ready for appointment. A is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Sarah Velasquez to the Topeka Board of Zoning Appeals to fill a term ending June 3, 2027.
You've heard the appointment is read, is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilman Miller, seconded by Deputy Mayor.
And Mayor, you do not vote on this one.
Pardon?
You do not vote on this one.
Okay.
All right. Okay.
Get your ring drop button.
It's ready to go.
Voting in progress. I need music now.
Jeopardy music?
I don't-- hello, Mayor, I don't have my machine here.
Okay, so we can just take a voice vote from you, council member?
Okay.
So what your vote is?
What's your vote, Madam?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we have nine yes, the motion carries.
Okay, and as I understand it, Ms. Velasquez is here in the room with us? There you are, thank you for standing, and thank you for serving. Move on next, Madam Clerk, presentations.
First presentation is the Noto 2026 Bid Report and Budget.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Pedro Concepcion, Noto Arts Director, Chief Executive Officer, will lead us to this item.
Pedro, good to see you.
Good to see you. Good to go, the body. I submitted our budget for 2025 and what we plan to spend, the allocated money for our recommended services. We are a very small budget, so you can see we have very, not a lot of lines to what we're spending. We are doing trash services for Noto and snow removal, which became very, which became very important this year and next year, last year. We think about $4,800 are going to go to snow and trash removal. We have a partnership with TRM. If you look at your packet, TRM, we actually have a good collaboration with them, where we pay about $3,200 a year. It's a partnership that we have grown and gotten really well comfortable with, where we provide opportunities for people in TRM to kind of help us out, and for our budget, it makes perfect sense. We're also making sure that we are putting some of this money for the beautification of Noto. If you guys notice the traffic on the Kansas Avenue Bridge, there's a lot of traffic right now, so we're really focused on trying to light up the sign that is right in the alley in Noto. That sign hasn't been lit up in about two and a half years or so, maybe more, so we're allocating some of that money to create a vibrancy in the district and for safety purposes as well. If we light up that sign, we believe that it will get more people to come to Noto and give it a better safety area around the district as well, too. If you notice, Noto has a lot of banners in the district. We're trying to make sure that our artists are known and bring opportunities to our artists. All of our banners down the district, if you look up our local artists, some of those need to be replaced. Being an art and entertainment district, we want to make sure that we can provide the opportunities for the artists and replace those banners, making sure that our district is very vibrant and provide opportunities for the artists as well. And that's honestly pretty much all of our budget. We're really focusing on making sure that Noto is an area that everybody feels welcome, that is clean, that is safe, and making sure that everybody finds a place in Noto, so allocating this money to making sure that the district is up to date, is welcoming, clean, and safe is the priority for Noto moving forward. If you guys have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Okay, any question? Councilwoman Miller?
It's not a question, just a comment and a compliment. It's really nice to see Noto move to this level, all the work that's been done before, and also to see you as a merchant resident-based organization taking ownership of that and moving it forward, using the partnership with TRM as well. It's great. Thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Akala?
Thank you, Mayor. Pedro, just has collecting of the dues gotten easier? I know with the previous director, there was definitely, with Tom, there was definitely some challenges, but is collection becoming easier for the fees?
I think what's really helping is the redevelopment program. We are noticing a lot of the business owners are actually taking advantage of the redevelopment program, but we need, anybody that wants to apply for the funds need to be up to date to their bid. So if you wanted to have help in collecting this money, you have to be updated on your bid. So we're seeing a lot of people re-up or making sure they pay their bid, to making sure they qualify for the redevelopment fund. And the redevelopment fund actually helps a lot in Noto because it beautifies the district as well, too, and it gives small businesses the opportunity to enhance and make their establishments or businesses even better for our community.
That's really good. That's good to hear that that, at least that was an addition, an additional incentive to get, you know, people to start paying more consistently, because again, I mean, we know times are tight, but we know that those services are needed in Noto, and they, it's not an excruciating amount that they're paying, so, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Any questions for Mr. Concepcion? Pedro, my compliments as well. I try to attend quite a few of the events that you have down there, and from my perspective, anyway, it seems like those events have increased in number as well as the participation. Seems like the crowds that you're getting down there are, have really grown and are consistent. It's not hit and miss. It seems like they're really consistent, people really enjoy, especially with the better weather coming along, I'm sure that it will really grow.
Yes, we're very, we're being very intentional for our programming, making sure that our programming resonates with the community, and adding different type of programming, like Day of the Dead, making sure we provide programming for everybody in Topeka, and making sure that it does resonate. I mean, we need to double down on things that the community wants and that we can actually achieve in a reasonable budgeted way as well, too. We need to also be responsible, making sure that we provide programming that has a high impact, low cost.
Well, thank you, I think you're doing an excellent job. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. Pedro, I want to compliment you on working with the rescue mission and teaming up with them with the trash. I think that's a great idea, because you're making them have ownership over there, a lot of the same people that were messing it up and stuff, so kudos to you on that. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, and it was very intentful. We're trying to make sure that the mission, and a lot of people see it as a nice offer for Noto as an asset.
Right.
You know, we're trying to make sure that we collaborate, and it's not just trash, it's also snow removal, and we all help out. I mean, I think this last winter, I was out there shoveling with them as well, too, and it's just very wholesome to go out there and help out and making sure we're also giving opportunities for people that are in need as well.
But I think the ownership is so important, and they're not going to want to mess it up, and they already feel a part of that, you know, but we've got, to bring in the businesses and to do that, I think that speaks volumes for you. And to give them that second chance is awesome, too.
Thank you.
Even though the job is done, it's taken, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hofer?
I'm going to let you get a free plug. Is there anything special going on this First Friday?
Yeah, there's a lot going on this First Friday. We have the Munch Market that is going on, that's a new initiative that brings not just Hispanic vendors, but all types of vendors to bring in and showcase their food. We also have Music at the Park, starting from 6:00 to 9:00, and we have a bouncy house from Carnival Guy that's going to be always established on First Fridays in Noto. So we're trying to make sure that Noto is a friendly, family event, having a bouncy house for the kiddos, having food for everybody, having music that everybody likes, and just having a vibrant district that everybody feels welcome. So I would encourage everybody to come out First Friday, it's going to be a huge day for us, and I think we have about 10 vendors just at the Munch Market, plus all the other vendors that are in Noto and all the businesses that will be open, and just happy to have you guys there.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Pedro, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on now, Madam Clerk, to Agenda 105, Consent Agenda.
We have a second presentation, it's the 2025 Legislative Update.
Oh, sorry, I missed that. I thought Whitney was just here to listen.
It's okay.
Sorry, Whitney.
Whatever your request is, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor. Yes, sir?
Apologies, I think Amanda wanted--
Oh, well, you can kick it off, you're always really good. I just wanted to say that Whitney's here today to talk about our legislative update, and lobbyists get a bad rap sometimes, but Whitney's one of the best. They serve a very valuable role over at the Capitol, making sure the city's interests are represented, and he did a great job this year, and now he's going to tell you all about all of the things he did.
Good intro.
Now, you can judge me when I'm through with my presentation, I suppose, as well. It had its moments. Members of the governing body, Dr. Perez and city staff, appreciate the opportunity to be here. You know, we started the session, going into the session, we were talking about a housing bill, and there was certainly a lot of frustration from members of the council with HUD, with Kansas Legislature, or, excuse me, Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, trying to get some enforcement action with a certain piece of property in the city, and we had what we thought was a pretty straightforward bill that would allow the City of Topeka, targeted bill for Topeka, to conduct inspections of HUD properties, the way the bill was limited in the legislative process, and we did advance work with the two major entities that have had friction with the city on earlier housing bills, and that is the Kansas Association of Realtors and the Kansas Landlords Association, and we effectively got both groups to neutral on the bill, and they didn't choose to weigh in after we had the bill coming out of the House, which we did on a vote of 111 to 12. That bill went to the Senate, went to the Senate Local Government Committee, where it was well-received and was advanced to the floor of the Senate late in the session. It was never scheduled for floor debate, and the excuse was they had 42 bills to get through that final week of the regular session, they just couldn't get to it. It was an accelerated session this year, they essentially started about as late as you can. January 13th, they shortened the deadlines and set it up on a 90 total day session instead of a 90 working day session. So as a result, they adjourned the regular session and did not take that bill to the floor. So I worked back with the Chair of both House and Senate Local Government Committee, we found another bill that would be suitable for this language, we amended that into a bill and sent it back to the Senate Chamber, where it became more clear that certain members of Senate leadership just didn't like the bill and weren't going to put it on the floor, and we were not able to get it considered on the Senate floor during the two-day veto session. So, that's what happened to that issue. The City of Topeka and its legislative agenda supported the Metropolitan Topeka Airport Authority's request for funding for MRO hangar, 80,000 square foot, or whatever they might decide to construct out there, maintenance, rehabilitation, and overhaul. I represented MTAA as well, along with another lobbyist, Paul Davis. We were successful in getting $10 million in the budget for that effort, and so we had a meeting recently with the MTAA and Department of Commerce, and they were evaluating options for what they might be able to do with that funding that requires a match from the MTAA. So, they're pretty excited about that, but they're going to have to keep moving that money, potentially goes away June 30, 2026, so they'll be working on that. Another issue that Amanda spent a lot of time with, the public funds bill, was an effort by the Kansas Bankers Association, credit unions, and some other financial groups to essentially take your money, municipal money, through the Treasury and provide lower-than-market interest rates and use that money to loan into the community. They had a study that they had commissioned that suggested that even though the city might be losing $1.75 million a year here in the City of Topeka, trust us, you'll make up for it by all of the economic development that our lending will do in your community. I don't think the city agreed with that, I don't think the League of Kansas Municipalities agreed with that either. The hearing was very contentious between the lenders and the municipalities-- The hearing was very contentious between the lenders and the municipalities and some other groups, school boards and the like. And the city's financial advisor, Jeff White, testified on behalf of the City of Topeka and other entities. And it became quite contentious. And the chairman kind of called a halt at the halfway point of the session and said, "Go work it out if you can." And that's when Amanda took kind of a lead. We had suggested putting a smaller group at the table, perhaps three or four representatives from each side, and let the state treasurer arbitrate that discussion. And after a day or two, they came back and had pretty much an agreement and did some fine tuning to it. And that's what got signed into law. And so I think everybody was pretty happy with that effort. Law enforcement officer age, you know, again, going into the session, it was a priority of the city to allow someone to enter essentially law enforcement training academy prior to being the age of 21, but not being able to be sworn in as a bona fide law enforcement officer until they were at least 21. Again, doing our due diligence, we reached out to the lobbyist who represents Fraternal Order of Police, the chiefs of police and the sheriffs. And we also reached out to the Kansas Commission on Peace Officer Standards, said, "This is our bill. Tell us what you think." The lobbyist for the three organizations said he didn't care. Not our issue. Don't think we're going to take a position. The Commission on Peace Officer Standards said, "We don't take a position on a bill until there's a hearing," which is not very helpful when you're trying to clear things up in advance of a hearing. So we proceeded to move forward. The bill went to the House Federal State Affairs Committee. At that hearing, representative from that organization showed up to watch the hearing, but they had not engaged. That bill passed out of the committee without any significant problems and went to the floor. It had some people who were sympathetic to the training, Peace Officers Training Commission, which was starting to elevate their interest in the bill by that time. But we did pass it out in 97 to 24. Headed to the Senate Committee on Judiciary, at which point in time that organization got very well-engaged with the bill. And we had a conference call with Amanda was on that, as well as representatives of the Police Department, and attempted to provide solutions to them to address their concerns. It was more apparent to me they didn't really want to fix their concerns this year, but they would be willing to engage in a discussion over the summer and maybe coming up with something more comprehensive in 2026. So that bill went away. It was used for another purpose by the Chair. They put some other language into it and sent it on. Couple of other issues that we were involved with, fast-track building permits. Amanda and Riannon spent considerable amount of time on that and essentially neutralized that bill to a position where it wasn't of a concern for the City of Topeka. Low-Impact Home Business Act has raised concerns, been introduced the last couple of years to allow people to essentially conduct business in their homes, which the City of Topeka has testified before. It's usually not a problem if we don't know about it. When people start engaging in business that the neighbors pay attention to and you have crowds and you have noise and you have things going on at all hours of the day, we pay attention to it. And that's where we generally will have to come in and do something about it. But we're, the city is not heavy-handed on people trying to make a living. There were some extreme examples that people were concerned about happening. And that bill was on track to pass as well. I think Councilmember Duncan probably blew that one up in the Senate side with some late-session testimony. And it kind of went away as well. Probably comes back. Low-income housing tax credits. There was a hearing in the House that the Chairman of the Commerce Committee brought to eliminate that program July 1 of this year. There were 36 opponents to the bill, including Mr. Copley and others, and one proponent, which is the Chair. That bill, I believe, or not passed out of committee, passed the House, went to the Senate. It was on track for passage there as well. It's got a potential large fiscal note. And that's, that's what the critics were pointing to, that it's a financial time bomb in the next few years. And so they didn't eliminate the program altogether, but they essentially set it up to be phased out over the next three years. Some golden oldies we've seen here in year-round, unilateral annexation prohibitions, three-mile area condemnation. Those bills were introduced. They did not advance. But there have been promises made that they will look at that during the interim. There is a potential subject of looking at extraterritorial voting. So if you don't live within the city limits, you have the ability to vote on certain things that might impact you. So that's kind of tied into that and that issue potentially is going to be talked about over the summer. And then the Heartland Flyer Passenger Rail. There was some funding that was earmarked in the, in the budget. Comes through Kansas Department of Transportation. The funding has to be approved by the State Finance Council, so they put a check in there. And primarily, that, that seems to be to see what the other states are doing. And I know Texas seems to be backing away from their commitment on that. We'll see what happens there. But at least there was some forward progress made on that issue in the budget process this year. I think, last count, we tracked and weighed in on or paid attention to more than 30 bills, provided testimony on more than 20, and more often than not, we were opposed. It's just the way the process seems to be working at late. And that's the summary of what happened during the 2025 legislative session. As always, it was a pleasure and beneficial to work with City Attorney Amanda Stanley, as well as Councilmember Duncan, who obviously serves at the League of Kansas Municipalities as well. We seem to cover the bases well. I'd be happy to stand for questions.
Any questions? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. You should probably know what I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask about these boarded-up houses. Where are we at with that?
There, the Commerce Committee is going to look at that again over the summer, as that is a study topic. It's, it's been a challenge for both rural and urban communities. There hadn't been any great fix that has come forth in the legislative process, but it is something they continue to talk about. They continue to talk about property taxes as well. That was to be the objective of House and Senate leadership, figuring out some way to reduce property taxes during the session. That issue was pushed aside or set aside in favor of income tax reduction. And I, and I think part of that, or a lot of that, is just the inability of the legislature to get its head around how they can impact property taxes, because that's really city-county schools issues. But they'll try again in 2026. And it's certainly going to be a gubernatorial issue, at least as evidenced by at least one of the Republicans running.
Well, I feel like, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I feel like every, every year that we wait, I see more and more and more and more, I see more of them being set on fire because of the squatters and the homelessness in there. And it's, it's, it's just kind of getting out of control. So that's why I'll keep bringing it up. But I don't know what we can do on our end to my colleagues, but we got to do something.
I understand it. It's been very frustrating. We've had legislation a number of times that has advanced to various levels in the process. The abandoned housing effort that we took on for probably three sessions. This relatively minor inspection bill targeted 20 HUD properties in the City of Topeka. There are people in leadership who have their opinions on property rights. And I guess as long as they don't have those kinds of properties next to them, it's not a priority, unfortunately.
Councilwoman Valdivia Akla?
Thank you, Mayor. Now, Whitney, I know you enjoyed working with me, too, this legislative session. Come on. We had a good time. All the emails and-
I agree.
Testimony and all of that. So don't forget, don't forget that, too.
I will always remember the good times.
I think that it's really, really, really unfortunate that special interests, be those property, you know, large property owners or whatever, are so, have such a hold either at the House or the Senate level or both levels that such a non-reactionary bill, a very common sense bill that is actually meant to be proactive, that is meant to help our flailing affordable housing stock, that actually is, is part of the initiatives that we're trying to run that think about, you know, reducing the amount of costs if we can get ahead of all of these bad properties. Instead of thinking in those realms, it's how it's going to impact other property owners that usually hide behind these LLCs and who ends up suffering, obviously, is the tenants and the municipalities because of extra hours, efforts, monies that have to be expended when these multifamily housing units start to flail and fail. And so Timberly and now Motive Power Place are just one, two tips of a very large iceberg in the city that we know of. And believe me when I say they're going to keep coming up. And as far as, you know, the abandoned properties, I'm thinking, you know, we really try to utilize the Shawnee County delegation. I really think that every legislative session, we're going to have to keep working before session starts with our Shawnee County delegation, maybe taking them around the city if they don't know what their Shawnee County is looking like. Maybe sitting down and not, not only doing a presentation, but really getting down to the brass tacks of what this does to the city and the county when we don't aggressively deal with these issues. Understanding they're just the county, but there are also votes. They also have other counties legislative, legislative officials that they talk to. And I'm still going to keep bugging Councilman Duncan. We have to have meetings through the League of Municipalities with other municipalities to form coalitions. You know, start showing these people photos, bringing, you know, "Let's go around to Wichita. Have Wichita folks come over here. Let's go to Hutch. Let's go to Emporia." So we can start getting a better understanding about what some of the major cities are dealing with and then develop those coalitions. I think that that's really, and maybe that won't work. I don't know. I'm, I'm just giving this to you, Whitney, and to the governing body as possible suggestions as we enter the next legislative session. Because I would agree, the abandoned housing, housing is becoming untenable in this city. And it is like a matchbox, just wait, matchboxes just waiting to be lit up. And I don't know what it is that, you know, folks that have power in the legislate, in the legislature don't seem to really give a damn about it. But, you know, those are my suggestions. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Anything further for Whitney? Thank you, sir, for your presentation and for your hard work over there on our behalf. Appreciate it. Okay, now, Madam Clerk, we'll move to the consent agenda if you'll read.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Robert Perez, allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of March 29 to April 25, 2025, and enumerating said expenditures therein. B is approval of a professional engineering contract between the City of Topeka and Alfred Benish and Company for providing professional engineering services for levy engineering and levy asset repair on the on-call basis for the City of Topeka, Kansas. C is approval of a professional engineering contract between the City of Topeka and Alfred Benish and Company for providing professional stream bank rehabilitation, stabilization and restoration design, inspection and construction engineering services on an on-call basis for the City of Topeka, Kansas, under the 2023 Capital Improvement Project Number 501097. D is approval of a professional engineering contract amendment between the City of Topeka and the Professional Engineering Consultants, PA, for providing additional civil engineering design and related services for the waterline and sanitary sewer replacement related to alley pavement repairs south of Second Street to Third Street between Woodlawn Avenue and Greenwood Avenue. E is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Valdivia Akla, approving a special event known as the Our Lady of Guadalupe 92nd Annual Fiesta to Topeka. F is approval of an resolution introduced by Councilmember Valdivia Akla, granting Our Lady of Guadalupe an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code, Section 945150 at seat concerning noise prohibitions. G is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller, granting Celtic Fox an exception to the provisions of the City of Topeka Code, Section 945150 at seat concerning noise prohibitions. H are minutes of the regular meeting in May 20, 2025. And there's a list of serial malt beverage license applications. And staff is recommending approval.
Okay, you've heard the consent agenda is read. Is there a motion from the body? Councilman Dobler, motion to approve? And second by Councilman Miller. Ready to vote?
Yes. Councilmember Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Okay, we have nine yes with Councilmember Ortiz voting no. The motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on now to Agenda Item Six, Action Items. Madam Clerk?
Six A is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee, comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks and Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project numbers 841098 Phase 2, 501107 Phase 3, and 281250 Phase 19 for street storm water and waterline improvements to the Central Highland Park neighborhood.
City Manager? Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, Steve Groh and our Director of Public Works will lead us to this item.
Good evening, governing body. This project consists of pavement reconstruction on Southeast 17th Street from Hudson Boulevard to Chandler Street, and on Southeast 19th Street from Adams to Indiana with concrete panel replacement on the 1900 block of Indiana. Also include the replacement of reinforced concrete box, which will be funded under the Storm Water Conveyance System Rehabilitation Program. And there'll also be some associated minor water main relocation. We're looking for your support to put this project out on the streets so that we could construct this yet in 2025.
Heard the action item is read. Is there a recommendation from the body? Motion to approve by Councilman Banks. Second by Councilwoman Ortiz. Ready to vote?
Councilmember Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Okay, we have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Thank you. Move to Action Item B. Madam Clerk?
E is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee, comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks and Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project number 841097 Phase 17 for a mill and overlay project in the Westwood neighborhood.
Steve?
This is a mill and overlay with some full-depth patching and select curb and gutter replacements. This will occur on Southwest Arnold from Southwest 17th to Southwest 19th Streets. And also two segments on 19th Street, one between Southwest Arnold and Southwest Penbrook, and the other segment between Southwest Oakley and Southwest High Avenue. It's just under $370,000. And with your approval, we would construct this in 2025.
Questions or a motion from the body? Motion to approve by Deputy Mayor. Second by Councilman Banks. Ready to vote?
Councilmember Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
All right, we have 10 yes.
All right, we have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Steve. Madam Clerk, Action Item C.
C is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee, comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project number 291152 for the fleet replacement sewer cleaning machine.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Sylvia Davis, our Director of Utilities will lead us to this item.
Thank you, good evening. Tonight, Utilities is seeking approval to replace our 2019 sewer cleaning machine with a 2025 sewer cleaning machine, cash funded out of our wastewater fleet replacement program. These machines are the very large trucks that we're getting a lot of use out of on days like today, on both the stormwater side and the wastewater side. We have a fleet of six of these currently, and we like to keep them on a rotation that allows us to get the best trade-in value for those as we are updating them, and it saves us a lot on maintenance of those. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Any questions for Sylvia? There a motion from the body? Oh, Councilman Hiller.
I do have a question because I saw the six years and it got my attention. You know, how many miles go on them and what kind of trade-in value? Does the acceleration get us?
I can't tell you the mileage we have on them. It would also, it's not just mileage, it was hours of usage that we get out of those. However, I can tell you that in the past, the number that we would be shelling out initially is far, far less than what I'm asking for tonight because we would get that trade-in value initially. However, with the cost of everything going up, we anticipate, working with our fleet group and the vendors that we work with, we anticipate getting a lot more value, surpassing our existing units. So traditionally, though, we are getting between, I think it's, have this here for you, typically, we are getting over $200,000 in trade-in value for these machines. But with the last estimates that we received, we were getting offered between 140,000 to 160,000. So we will, once we purchase this machine, we will surplus one of our existing machines, so that's just a trade-in.
The 250 is the retail price or whatever you'd want to call it? Is the purchase price?
Oh, no, the purchase price of this new machine is $551,000. We're coming before you because it's a purchase over $250,000.
Okay, and we're spending that much every six years?
No, traditionally, we do not spend that much. It's just the cost of the machines going up significantly since COVID. So we've, we've backed off of our replacement cycle. And we are also reviewing our fleet as it stands. We, I don't want to promise anything, but we are more than likely going to go down a machine because of the cost of these. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Further questions for City? Okay, we have a motion to approve by Councilman Dobler and a second by Deputy Mayor. Ready to vote?
Councilmember Valdivia Akla?
No.
Okay, we have nine yes with Councilmember Valdivia Akla voting no, the motion carries.
Action Item B, Madam Clerk.
D is a resolution introduced by Public Infrastructure Committee, comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project number 161005 Phase Three, 161005 Phase Two, and 161016 Phase One for the Soldier Creek Levy Raise.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Sylvia Davis, our Utilities Director will lead us to this item.
Okay, again, tonight, we are requesting approval for this construction project that will raise the Soldier Creek Levy between Menoken Road and Highway 75, as required for continued certification of the city's North Topeka Levy Unit. This levy unit is, belongs to the North Topeka Drainage District, so we do have a cost-share agreement with them. We did present on this to the Public Infrastructure Committee. And again, I stand for any questions you all might have.
Questions for Ms. Davis? Okay, we have a motion to approve by Councilman Banks. Second by Councilwoman Ortiz. Ready to vote?
Councilmember Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Okay, we have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, City. Okay, Action Item E, Madam Clerk.
E is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, making certain findings pursuant to the Kansas Reinvestment Housing Incentive District Act with regard to an application submitted by F&amp;C Development Incorporated to establish a reinvestment housing incentive district, and requesting that the Secretary of Commerce review the resolution and advise the governing body.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Rannan Freeman, our Director of Plan and Development Services will lead us to this item.
All right, good evening, Mayor, members of the governing body. So tonight, I am coming forward to you with a resolution seeking approval to send forth the creation of a RHID reinvestment housing incentive district located at the corner of Sixth and Van Buren in downtown Topeka. Just some light details about the project. This will still have to go to Department of Commerce for approval before it comes back here for us to entertain any project plans. But the idea is a approximately 200-unit apartment complex. It's expected to be market rate, which I think plays really nicely with some of the projects that we've had awarded recently in downtown. So excited to help get them to the next step in the process of getting departments blessing for the creation of the district. I stand for any questions.
Questions for Rhiannon? Councilwoman Hiller?
No questions, just thank you for bringing this forward. For those who have not followed it, this project, these developers have been working with Rhiannon and the city for more than five years. It's a really quality company, real quality development. They were engaged enough in our dynamic core planning even that designs of their, that have carried forward for their development are part of the, the pictures in our plan. And it's, as she said, it's going to be really great. There are already people I know that want to sign up and live there. Thank you.
No further questions? There's a motion to approve by Councilwoman, excuse me, Councilman Dobler and second by Councilman Banks. Ready to vote?
Councilmember Valdivia Akla?
Did you hear me?
I can now.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Rhiannon. Okay, Action Item F, Madam Clerk.
F is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez regarding additional funding for operations and maintenance of Hotel Topeka in the amount of $291,086.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Braxton Kopley, our Deputy City Manager will lead us to this item.
Good evening, governing body. The, the current request for funding is in the amount of 291,000. We currently have 46,000 in the operating account under the hotel management agreement. We're required to keep a minimum balance of 150,000. Obviously, at this point, we are getting critically low on funds. I respectfully ask for approval of this. I will point out that the actual caption of the resolution is, does not include the dollar amount because the resolution is dependent on us meeting our obligations under the management agreement as well as complying with the cash basis laws. The actual caption is introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez regarding additional funding for operations and maintenance of Hotel Topeka.
Any questions for Deputy, Deputy City Manager? Okay, we have a motion to approve by Councilman Dobler. And second by Deputy Mayor. Ready to vote?
Councilmember Valdivia Akla?
No. No?
Got, I got it, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Sorry. All right, we have seven yes with Councilmembers Valdivia Akla, Ortiz, and Banks voting no. The motion carries.
Thank you. Action Item G, Madam Clerk.
G is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, authorizing adopting the proposed 2026 to 2035 Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, and 2026-2028 Capital Improvement Budget, CIB, and approving project budgets.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Josh McInnarny, our Division Director, Budget and Finance will lead us to this item. I do want to point out that there's been some questions as to whether or not we actually have to adopt this, this evening. I will tell you that we don't. If the governing body wishes to hold additional conversations, we can do that through the budget process. However, I will point out in the next item, to issue notice of intent for some of our revenue bonds, we can still proceed with that if this governing body wishes to postpone adoption of the CIP this evening.
Councilman Duncan?
I guess for legal, can we get a point of clarification? If we want to take that action, do we need some sort of affirmative motion to decide it at a later date or during, after the budget? Or can we just?
It would be ideal if someone would make a motion to defer.
Okay. Just want to make sure so I know what we need to do. Thanks.
So I guess the only thing I would add, good evening, everybody. So CIP, it is a fluid process. So just because if we approve things tonight, that doesn't mean it can't change later down the line. That's happened before, there's been precedent for that. And then also, this is one of many approval processes the body will have. So like we talked about in early April, any project over $250,000 has to go back to the governing body for any sort of approval. And actually, I guess go back to the Public Works Infrastructure Committee, then to the governing body. So there's multiple approvals, so it's, this is not the end-all-be-all tonight, this is just one of many approvals, so.
Councilman Dobler?
I can tell you, Dan. Here you go.
Yeah, I didn't know how to do that.
Before we move on, I've, I've got an indication from, well, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hiller, you had a mark as a motion. Now it's rescinded?
It's okay.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
All right, so, so I'm going to make a motion to move this to the first meeting following the adoption of the operating budget.
Put your name down as the motion now.
But then it's just a motion to, to approve.
Oh.
No, no, it's not. You just make, state your motion.
I just stated it.
Okay, and then is, is there a second? Okay, second. Let me ask a question before we move on. Would this necessitate doing the same thing with the next item, H? Or do you have to do it separately?
Fine.
No, sir, we would still need to, we still need to ask the governing body to consider that this evening because we have to do, issue a notice of intent to, yeah, for those revenue bonds.
Okay. So again, we have a motion and a second. Everybody understand the motion to defer to the first meeting and after following the operating budget? Okay, ready to vote?
Yep. Let's see, clear speaker. Okay, you should be ready to go. Councilmember Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Okay, we have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Action Item H, Madam Clerk.
H is a resolution and notice of intent introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez declaring the necessity to repair, alter, reconstruct, enlarge, or improve the city's water, water pollution, and/or stormwater utility system through improvement projects authorized by resolution and providing notice of intention authorizing the issuance of revenue bonds in the manner required by KSA 101201 at seek.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Josh McInnarny, Division Director of Budget and Finance will lead us to this item.
Good evening, everybody. So what this item is, it's just strictly a notice of intent that gives us the opportunity to, of the projects listed that we may issue revenue bonds for. This does not indicate any sort of bond sale, and this does not preclude us from using cash to fund future projects. It's simply letting the market know we have the possibility of issuing revenue bonds from the stated projects. And then, yeah, that's, that's just strictly an administrative item required by state law, and we do this every, we have to do this every year.
Any questions for Josh? Seeing then, I see a motion to approve by Deputy Mayor, second by Councilman Dobler. Ready to vote?
Councilmember Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Okay, we have nine yes with Councilmember Duncan voting no, the motion carries.
Those are all our action items. We move on non-action items, Madam Clerk.
A is discussion regarding the request from Tex Incorporated to operate an ambulance service within the City of Topeka.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Amanda Stanley, our City Attorney, will lead us to this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager. Before you today is like the follow-up to a discussion that started a couple months ago when we asked you to revise your ambulance franchise ordinance. We realized that there were ambulance transport companies that were operating in town, and we needed to have a mechanism for them to apply for a franchise. Step one was we didn't have an application, so now we have an application to become a franchise owner. Step two is having the companies apply. You approved a franchise for one company, I believe, last week, the week before, and now tonight before you is Tex Incorporated. Their owner, Mr. Teter, is here if you have questions about their application.
Any questions for, discussion on this? Councilman Duncan?
I guess my question to staff would just be, I'm assuming if this is in front of us, they've passed everything they're supposed to pass and checked all the boxes and have all the qualifications and otherwise you wouldn't bring it to us maybe?
Yes, they have met all the requirements of the ordinance.
Just want to make sure, thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller?
I think for all of us, as well as for the public, if they're here, could they do a brief presentation on what their services are and what they're covering?
I think you have a representative here?
I believe right here.
They waited all this time?
Good evening, Councilmen and Councilwomen. Any questions you have, we're happy to, to answer. We can give you a brief overview of Tex Incorporated. We are the co-directors of Tex Incorporated, an EMS service, an ambulance service. We've been doing this since 2000. We service multiple counties in northeast Kansas from a 911 perspective, Jackson County, Osage County, Nima County, Donafin County. We also operate a inter-facility transfer division. And we take patients, whether they're basic life support or whether they need critical care, advanced life support, we take them from hospital to hospital. We're very excited and happy to serve patients in Topeka and Shawnee County. If you have any questions, we're, we're glad to answer them.
Anything further?
No questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay, move on to the next non-action item. Madam Clerk?
B is discussion concerning claims made by the city, authorizing the city attorney to initiate lawsuits up to $35,000, creating Section 3.35070 of the Topeka Municipal Code.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Amanda Stanley, City Attorney, and Jeffrey Leidek, our Senior Attorney, will lead us to this item.
Jeff actually couldn't actually be here today, so you're stuck with just me today, but I will go through it. This is an ordinance that came out of the Policy and Finance Committee. It was originally brought to our attention by Councilman Miller, who asked some questions about how do we recover when people damage city property? We are self-insured. We went self-insured when it came to vehicle accidents a couple years ago, and during that process, we've really looked at where are there gaps? And that question raised a gap in our system. What we realized is oftentimes, we don't recover when people damage city property. And I'll let Dan, if the PowerPoint comes up, flip through it, but if it's not in there, we'll just keep talking. Okay, I can't see a screen, I guess, from where I'm at. But there we go. Sorry, this is weird when you don't have a screen in front of you over here. So the ordinance in front of you would allow the city attorney the authority to initiate and file and prosecute a civil cause of action in the name of, on behalf of the city, without needing to obtain ordinance or resolution authorizing lawsuit from the governing body. As long as the initial damages claimed are based in tort and contract law, it's a very limited ordinance, do not exceed $35,000 at the time of filing. And if you go to the next slide, why is this proposed ordinance needed? Well, under current case law, the governing body must take an affirmative action to file any litigation. The city attorney's office does not initiate a litigation without affirmative action by the governing body ordering us to go do so. So when it comes to defending cases, the Constitution says we have to defend them, so you don't have to take an affirmative action to defend. That's something the Constitution tells us to do. But when it comes to actually suing or recovering damages on your behalf, case law says that you have to take an affirmative action. There are instances where city's property is damaged for something as low as like $500, or you hit a car and you hit the stoplight in the process. There are low-level claims that it does not make sense to come to the governing body meeting and ask to initiate damages for a $250 claim. It does make sense for the taxpayers that we recover on a $250 claim, especially when a vehicle has insurance and the insurance provider could be paying for those kind of claims. So the proposal that came from Jeffrey Lydic in my office, I'll give him lots of credit for that, is, well, what if we found a happy medium? What is a low-dollar amount that would allow us to efficiently use the taxpayers' money to go recover on these very normal, routine, everyday claims, but still come to the governing body on the big stuff? You know, if we're filing a large-dollar lawsuit, you should be the ones deciding that. If it's a policy issue on an issue of a referendum, you should be the ones deciding that. But if it's recovering because a trash truck got hit by a car that spun out on ice, that probably is not, not something that you guys need to spend time on every Tuesday night. And so some of the benefits are timeliness of it. We do, it's not uncommon that we get calls to our office from departments that say, hey, this happened two years ago, and we've been trying to recover, now what? And we quickly calculate the statute of limitations and realize that if you don't file in the next day or two, nothing happens because you are out of time. So it allows some timeliness and speed, strategy. Sometimes it's not in your best interest to tell someone that you are filing a lawsuit until you file it. It can also lead to efficiency. And so then, the last slide talks about what kind of matters this, we routinely see that this could be used for. And so these are things like a contractor digs a well without calling and locates and strikes a water sewer line. That is damage, negligence on behalf of the contractor, something that the taxpayers should not have to absorb just because there was negligence. A driver knocks down a street light or a street sign, fortunately, we do have that happen on occasion in Topeka, and an insurance company maybe disputes a liability in the insurance claim. Finally, let's say someone crashes into a city vehicle, causing damage, there's comparative of fault, and who is more at fault? And sometimes that takes going all the way down to litigation, especially if the insurance company knows that we don't file lawsuits. It's easier to deny your claim if you don't think that we will ever challenge that. Or finally, like if someone crashes into a vehicle, another city property, these are very common, routine kinds of claims that people recover for. If you have ever had the misfortune of hydroplaning on the turnpike, you will get a bill from the K T A when you hit their median. So this is just something that is very normal that cities do, and so this is the ordinance that is in front of you. Policy and finance did limit it to tort claims and contract claims to make sure that it was very clearly the intent, which was our intent, to keep it to these types of limited causes of action. Happy to stand for any questions.
Councilwoman Hillary?
Well, way to go, Councilman Miller. Well, all right. I know it can vary from year to year, but if we've not been trying, pursuing these claims, do you have an estimate of what we might be talking about?
We could try to get that from risk management. I don't know. What we have found is oftentimes departments just write it off as a loss because they didn't think there was a way to recover. So I would guess that there is not very accurate tracking on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
So anything on that, is like, let's say hitting a stop sign and all that, we, our workers would have to take a little extra more time to document things with photos and maybe writing some stuff down?
And they already do that when city property's damaged, you call for a police report and get a police report on those kind of things. So the documentation is already there.
Kirk, thank you. Councilman Duncan?
Just two things I want to reiterate because I think they're important. The first is, the committee worked hard to limit it to the situations that Attorney Stanley laid out. And then the second was, it very clearly, now the language says it can't be for a zero-dollar lawsuit. So for instance, the case referenced in that presentation, versus Emming, which was the Hartland Park, was not a dollar amount case, right? And we wanted, didn't, wanted to make sure that if it was something like that, where there was a petition or any other sort of action that didn't include money, that would still have to come before us for discussion so that those, and legal had no problem making sure that was in there, but the committee did make sure we kept that scope very narrow. Thank you, Mayor.
Good thinking. Again, compliments. Good question asked, and the resolution brought forward. Thank you.
I can't remember, thank you, Mayor. I can't remember the gentleman's name at the Valley Park NIA meeting, who consistently would bring this subject up every single time I'd go to the meeting. I'm sure Sylvia, Councilwoman, I apologize, Councilwoman Ortiz, heard the same guy. Yeah, you can envision the guy's face right now. So shout out to him for starting the conversation, and he said he's been bringing this up for years, and nobody's ever done anything, so here we are.
Good work. Thank you. Okay, there are no further non-action items. Move on to public comment. There are a number of individuals signed up for public comment. I'll call them in the order they've been presented. First person is Carrie Bell.
Give me just a minute before you start the clock, please. I am ready. I am speaking to you today as the mother of Dylan Walstrom, who has tragically lost his life after being shot in the face nine times by a Topeka police officer. My son was asleep in a vehicle parked in an alley when an officer approached him. Despite being the only individual on the scene, the officer saw fit to open fire in striking Dylan in the face nine times. Following his death, I received a visit from a Fort Worth police officer who handed me a card from the KBI and requested that I contact the individual listed. His name was Jared. I attempted to reach Jared, but he did not answer my call. As a result, I was left with unanswered questions and concerns. The official account of the incident by the Topeka Police Department stated that there was a struggle prior to the shooting, and that Dylan had aimed his gun at the officer. However, the video footage clearly shows that Dylan's gun was pointed to the dashboard, and his finger was not on the trigger. Dylan left, Dylan, it was in his left hand, and he was right-handed. Furthermore, Dylan's picture was posted in the newspaper with a different narrative. One of the first press releases said the police officer took care of a problem in Topeka. And they were talking about Dylan. The officer did acknowledge that Dylan appeared disoriented and was likely waking up from asleep. He also inquired about whether I had retained an attorney, to which I replied, I was unsure if I needed one. I am currently waiting the state of Kansas to take action before I decide my next moves. When my son's brother and I went to pay our last respects, we were denied the opportunity to view Dylan's body. The mortician explained that this was not possible, but offered to show me Dylan's hand as a means of verification that he was my son. I requested to see his hand with a tattoo on it, but the mortician was unsure which hand was available to view. In order to gain a better understanding of the events surrounding my son's death, I was forced to hire a body cam specialist from Chicago at the cost of $7,000. Her analysis revealed a 45-second gap between the time the police officer exited his vehicle and the shooting. Additionally, there were discrepancies in the official account highlighting the need for updated laws and greater accountability within the Kansas law enforcement system.
Here's stuff.
In contrast, in contrast, the state of Texas has implemented more transparent protocols, requiring the release of body camera footage within 24 to 48 hours of the incident. This approach was proven successfully in de-escalating situations and promoting accountability among officers. Okay, I am seeking answers regarding the circumstances surrounding my son's murder, particularly the identity of the officer responsible. The lack of transparency and accountability within the Topeka Police Department is alarming, and I believe it is essential to have an expert team dedicated to analyzing body cam footage. How can I find out who murdered my son? I want to know who is responsible for his death.
You need more time, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
How much time? Couple of minutes?
Couple of minutes at the most.
Anyone object? Okay, proceed.
I want to know who is responsible for his death, as the lack of training and accountability within the Topeka Police Department is unacceptable. Shooting someone in the head nine times is inexcusable, regardless of the circumstances. Dylan also has left behind a daughter that just turned 13 years old, his brother, me, and many, many loved ones in my family. I wanted to thank you for listening to me. I drove from Fort Worth, Texas, just to appear before you for five minutes. Nothing furthermore. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, LaRona Lassiter Saunders?
Okay, good evening, Mayor Padilla and the governing board. My name is LaRona Lassiter Saunders. Many of you know me as an attorney and justice advocate, and before my time starts, I just want to make sure the record is straight, and that you're informed that we voluntarily dismissed the Taylor Lowery case against the city of Topeka, so there is no current active litigation. With that being said, let me be real clear. We can refile this within six months, and whether we do that is entirely up to each of you and your next steps. And please do not be confused. Dismissing this lawsuit is not defeat. It doesn't mean this is over. On the contrary, what it actually did was allowed us to speak freely in the public and tell the truth, because your city attorney and the legal team has tried everything to keep the public from finding out the truth. So it seemed like we were like handcuffed with the law, and those handcuffs have come off. I would rather dismiss a lawsuit and make the public informed and keep them safe than to be silent and be paid while some people sit comfortable in cover-up. The other great thing is, this ended the game plan, and some of you might not know this, but the city attorney and the legal team has been playing a game with the community members for years. That game is called Use the Law as a Sword and a Shield. So they use it as a shield to block access to video cam footage, to officers' names, but they use it to cut down taxpayers when they try to gain access to it. They use it to allow the FOP to put policy that shields the unethical and ruthless actions of police officers, while they use the same law to condone the actions of those officers and let them use their authority to, as a sword, to cut the lives of your residents short. The same residents that they are sworn to protect and serve. So we're here to say no more. The public is now aware of your duplicitous games, your games that are affecting community members' lives, their well-being, and their tax dollars, and we demand that it ends today. One more huge thing it does is it puts the ball in your court. All eyes are on you. The city attorney can no longer advise you not to attend community meetings or resolve community issues due to pending litigation. That excuse is gone. You can no longer use that excuse not to change policies that are harmful to the residents of Topeka. Now, we realize that dismissing that lawsuit was unorthodox, and it's out the box, but at least we did something to help keep the community safe and informed. All eyes are on you. What are you going to do? Do something about the $50 an hour your city attorney and Lieutenant Sturgeon put in place for family members to review footage. $50 an hour, it's taxpayers, just to review the footage and find out what happened to their family. Did you guys approve that? Did you know about that? Do something. Do something, in Taylor Lowery's case, to hold the officers, like Officer Good accountable. He was so scary, he called the highest alert in a law officer could call, officer in danger, when all Taylor was doing was running. He essentially put a hit on Taylor, but that information has been covered because we didn't have access to the video. I would like to request more time.
How much time do you need?
Two more minutes.
Two more minutes. I caution you also, in your words, two more minutes? Does anyone disapprove? Okay, two more minutes?
Yes, Mayor, I'm very aware of my words. Another officer, and I'm not going to use his name because he seemed to be one of the ones that was remorseful, he used his own handgun, he altered it to make it equivalent to a semi-automatic. He had been written up for this before, and when Taylor was shot, it just effectively let him put more bullets in him faster. And what, we're going to let him off again? We don't have that information? Sitting quietly or sitting in the dark is not an excuse. Do something. And this just isn't about Taylor Lowery, it's also about Dylan Walshroom. The DA's narrative did not line up with what was actually in the footage. Access was blocked to the footage by the city attorney. Ms. Carrie had to hire an expert to come look at the footage, and that's how we realized that it didn't add up, but the public wouldn't know about that. Why? Because when we ask for access, you're charged, or they're not releasing it. A public servant killed one of your residents, and nobody has done anything. And it's not like your city attorney and your city manager knows, because I personally told them, and nothing has been done to date to resolve that. Do something. Do something in the case of Christopher Kelly, a military vet was going to the DA to get help in a mental crisis. He ends up getting gunned down by untrained officers that did not know how to de-escalate the situation. Our crisis intervention team was on leave and told not to, not to come. Do something. How, how much more are we going to fail our residents? How are we going to let our residents suffer losses at the hands of law enforcement officers due to our policies, and we sit there silent? When you're running for your positions, you're not silent. You're in churches, picnics, parks, with promises of what you're going to do. We're here to say, act on those promises. We're here to say, act on those promises. Do something. I know I'm out of time. I have plenty to say. I'll probably be back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. Via Zoom, Martha Boatright. I see you. But you just froze up. Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Okay, now we can see you as well.
Okay. All right.
Start your time as soon as you start.
Okay. I also wanted to speak on the recent shootings that have happened and the issues with body cams that we have. I hear a lot of talk from the city council about how we have all these budget shortfalls, and I want to know, why are we paying for body cams if we're not going to actually use them the way they're supposed to? What is the point of body cams if people are not allowed to review them to see whether police are behaving correctly? Is the point of them accountability to actually, you know, try to make police officers behave in a way that is upholding of the law and protecting of people with mental illness and so forth and so on, and all the things that they are implemented for? Or is it just, you know, PR for the city? And why are we paying for this? Because I know, I know that you guys have to buy the cams, you have to buy storage for the footage. We spend all of this money as taxpayers, and yet you are blocking people's ability to see things, because yes, low and behold, when we look at these cameras, we find out the cops are doing things they're not supposed to do. And then, by doing this, by doing about all these obstacles, you open us up to lawsuits. At what point do we start looking at the way our cops are behaving, the way we are spending money on certain parts of the police as part of the budget problem of this city? Because if we're going to let cops commit basically crimes and get sued by the city, that's a waste of taxpayer money. If we're spending money on cameras that are little more than just a PR to say, oh, hey, we have body cameras, aren't we great? I mean, you're not allowed to look at them. You're not allowed to see them. That's a waste of our taxpayer money. And at some point, I really appreciate that we have a behavior, you know, team, but we're sending people, we're still sending cops out there with guns to deal with situations where people are having mental health crises. Last time I was at city council, the new police chief said that he was open to the idea of the Kahoots program here in Topeka, and I think that would be a really positive step, is to, you know, maybe start saving ourselves some money on our police budget if we were to actually be sending the people who were really needed for situations and not a person with a gun. And that is because that is who you are sending when you call a police officer. You are sending somebody with a gun, and as long as there is a gun in the situation, there's a potential for someone to die. And we really should be sparing that for the situations that we absolutely need it. That's all I have to say, and I feel so terrible for the families of the people who have been lost in this situation. This isn't fair, and I deeply dread, you know, not speaking, you know, for my employer, but for myself personally, I dread when some of the people on my caseload have mental health crises, because I do worry what's going to happen to them when I hear about these news reports. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Danielle Twemlow?
There's another people signed up. I'll give up my time.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Jeff Campbell?
Yes. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here in front of the city council. I've not done this before. My name is Jeff Campbell. I was born here in Topeka. I'm 69 years old, and I had a variety of businesses that I just retired from over the last 50 years. So I've been pretty close to the pulse of business in Topeka for a long time, and one of the things that I wanted to bring up now that I'm retired, which means I have more time to do my wife's honey-do list, I'm curious as to the future as well as the past of our local community. I've sat back for the 50 years I was in business and watched a lot of things transpire in this community, and sometimes I see that we get into an analysis paralysis mode where things don't get done. And I understand there's a lot that needs to be done in order to get people on board with some of these things, but some of them that come to mind was how much money we spent on the water tower project over a 15-year period, how much money we've spent on the riverfront project up to now as to where we're going with it. Another one, a concern that I have is also the continuing expenditures of the hotel in Topeka that I, you know, I was in business for a long time, and we didn't continue to put money into something that we were concerned about. We just went ahead and took our losses and went on from there. One of the things that prompted me to come here today was the information that was provided concerning a planning committee meeting on that, on a new fueling station or truck stop at Sixth and Fairlon. And the planning process had been in place since March on this, and they've submitted information to you guys, and it will end up being another meeting at a later date, but they only asked for information from people in the areas that are within 200 feet of where that location is. They also, they extended that a little bit to an area of 500 feet, which is not really anything that involves the amount of traffic that's going to be created in that area. I grew up in that area back when that was country roads. We bought our property from Alf Landin', and we had a dirt road at our house for years. But there are two intersections there that are two-lane roads only, and this location, I understand the need to get it on the tax rolls from a revenue standpoint, from sales tax and property tax and things like that, but I don't understand why we would put one within one mile of an existing one that provides four of the things that truckers are looking for. The new one that they want to put in there, it provides three of those things, and that's putting these guys in direct competition with each other, and one of them's going to falter from a standpoint, because it's, and with I-70 going through all the changes that it's going through, I'm curious as to where we're going as a community with doing this and all these expenditures and issuing plans for somebody to build in an area that the KDOT has to get involved and figure out what they're going to do on all of the roads there. Those are residential areas that join that on three of those sides, and there's not room for truck traffic in those areas. And that's one of the things, I believe Maverick is the name of the company. Being as I've never been here before, is this telling me that four minutes is up?
It is, sir. Do you need more time?
Just a couple more minutes, if I could.
Okay. Is there any opposition? Okay, go ahead.
I grew up here. I love this community, and I like to see it prosper, and I'm real concerned when I see stuff like this happening. And I just, I just wanted to speak from a business standpoint, what I see going on, and hoping that the council and the governing bodies of this city begin to really take a look at some of this stuff, because we're going down a road that is not beneficial that I see, and that's just from my 50 years' experience of being in business, and that's the only expertise I can offer. And I really appreciate y'all's time and letting me speak here today, and that's all I've got to say. Any questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Honorable mayor and our governing body, good evening. I'm here because I wanted to support the others, and I didn't know if I could give any of my time back to any of these individuals that needed extra time, but then maybe they finished what they had to say. I just want to follow up and tell you thank you again. I do have a comment I'd like to make, and that is, as you look at the audience today, there are people's families that have been affected by the murders of several of our persons that's already been mentioned, and we are specifically talking about the Lowery case. I commend them for dismissing this case so that we can go actually public with a lot of information you may not have. The other day, and I won't go into the litigator's name, but he talked about, I was sharing some information with him, and they said, you know, it's in litigation. I said, but you're the litigator, and you're at a meeting, and I didn't bring my attorney, but that was all right. I can deal with that. The other piece of this is that there was information that he did not have that came from some of the officers' families, and it was very interesting. I said, you mean to tell me I'm getting information from white or Caucasian? I have an international family, that's why I can say that. And I'm a black woman in this community, and they come to me, it's a shame that this and this was done, and I'm thinking, now how would you know that? Everything's supposed to be quiet. We're not supposed to talk about this. But they obviously have some information. In one of the cases, and I believe it's the Chris Kelly's case, that one of the persons made the comment when they said, well, can you de-escalate any kind of way? Well, we don't want to send the dog in. We don't want to kill the dog. What? Okay, but we can shoot him up, but not the dog. All right. Then in another case, the Lowery case, it was just very interesting that one of the officers, maybe second-hand information, maybe firsthand information, made the comment that when they asked him about de-escalating, he said, if you see someone de-escalating, how do you de-escalate them, rather, and even if there's a mental illness there, he said, I just shoot them. So I thought, now what kind of training? What kind of humanity? What is this in Topeka, Kansas? Even the other comment was made that we have more lawsuits in this city for a population its size than any other city in the nation? Come on, Brown v. Board. Come on, Stonefolly. Come on, Topeka, Kansas, center of the US of A. What kind of label is that? We cannot grin and shuck and jive continually. Something must be done. So my comment was, I'm not coming just specifically about the Lowery case, but it is important, as you see persons in the audience today that were affected by that, but I'm concerned about cases over 30 years in this community where I have not seen a Mexican or a black person, and now you know there's a multiplicity of Caucasians as well, that they've not come forward, one, because you're too poor to get an attorney, and then you don't always have attorneys like some of the ones here that do this pro bono, because they want to see the right thing done. And even when a proposal goes before this governing body who the Lord has called you to be leaders and allowed you to be elected, at least you can abstain, instead of saying, I have to say yes? No, you don't. You can abstain and then maybe rest at night. So I just want to say there's some things that's been said, and I can't see someone with, I know my time's getting ready to run out, and mayor, I don't know, but you know what? I might need another minute if I can, if you can stand me another minute, but it's all right. You don't have to love me, just love me and the Lord. Don't even have to like what I have to say. But another officer made the comment about his gun and the automatic, well, you know, that's been passed down from the government now, from the higher-ups about the automatic machine guns that's going to be allowed. I wonder who can use them. But at any rate, that I can't imagine that you would shoot 15 clips, and the man was shot 34 times, and then the 41 redacted and entering and exiting. I'm thinking, I asked somebody the other day. Bingo.
Anybody object? A few more minutes?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, ma'am.
I said, what kind of law is there for shooting a dog that's trying to attack you? And every person there, one of the attorneys and another person, said, nothing but misdemeanor. I said, misdemeanor what? If you shoot a dog, you are not supposed to shoot an animal, a dog that's attacking you. I said, are you serious? Is that a law? Is that a law? What is that? You're not supposed to shoot a dog that's attacking you, but you can shoot a man 34 times that's fleeing? I don't know. I don't know. I just know it's got to go more public, and I was surprised at the number of people I even spoke with on this week that said, I didn't realize it came down like that. I didn't know. Well, okay, so we're going to be real public about questions that people have. How are all these things happening? And nothing happens. Now, even reviewing the settlement claims, we understand that the city manager and the attorney could agree on a settlement, and then they'll send it to the governing body. I don't know if you know that. And then you can go from there. And if you didn't know that, you know it now. So whatever your vote might be, you can't use the excuse, I can't litigate. Oh, we can't speak about it. Come on, let's speak on the truth. And God has called us. He's called us. If my people, which are called by my name, would humble themselves, hear from God. I'm talking about hear truth now. Pray. Seek my face. Seek what is righteous. Then we can do the right thing in this city. In the meantime, I think we need a citizens' review board. I was on Judge Mitchell's citizens' review board for about 20 years, and that means citizens not entangled with the city or any laws or whatever will be able to mediate. I asked the, well, I don't know if I should call his name, but you know who the litigator is. Is there any option? Do you have a mediation? Can you mediate? And he said, well, it's a judge order. I said, can you mediate? And he said, yes, I can. I thought, okay, maybe we could trust him to mediate a case. But anyway, bless you all. I pray for you. I hope you do the right thing.
Okay. There are no further persons signed up for public comment, and we'll move on to announcements. Madam clerk?
Tomorrow, June 4th, there's a citizen government review committee meeting in the first-floor conference room of City Hall located at 215 Southeast 7th Street, Topeka. It'll be from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And then on the June 10th governing body agenda, we will have one certificate of recognition for the Topeka Renaissance Festival. We have three board appointments. We have one presentation for the 2022 to 2025 citywide housing investment summary report. There is one noise exception on the consent agenda. Action items include a resolution setting a July 15 public hearing date for 30th and Topeka Boulevard CID, and then another one for the TIF. We have an ordinance for creating TMC section on city claims, and we also have the parking ordinance, amending TMC Chapter 10. Discussions include utility bill, real estate liens, and that is it.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Nothing for me, mayor. Thank you.
Okay. With Deputy Mayor Kell.
Just one thing. Ms. Bell, you stood for questions. We don't, it's not a back-and-forth, but I will be more happy to meet with you afterwards for a few minutes to answer any questions you may have that I can't answer, but just want to let you know that we weren't ignoring you. It's not a question time. So, thank you.
Counselor Miller?
Nothing for me to make. Nothing today. Thank you.
Counselor Dober?
Nothing. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Counselor Duncan?
Nothing, mayor. Thank you.
Counselor Hoover?
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Counselor Miller?
I had just a couple things. I'll move quickly. One, for those that weren't, we had a couple of us there, but the groundbreaking occurred today for the Union at Tower redevelopment or development project. The people from the sponsoring organization were there. It was pretty exciting to see it moving. For those of us who were on the ride with the city manager bike ride, we actually saw the heavy equipment out there preparing the site at first. It's going to be really great for affordable housing as well as downtown and the whole city. I wanted to make a request, not for an answer tonight, but we've been notified that some changes are happening in terms of the development of what's being called a one-stop-shop, and perhaps having the various mobile units that have been going to different sites staying at a single site, at least for a four-month experimental period. And as a major partner in this, I guess I would like to ask for an explanation so we understand exactly what's going on these days in general and for the public, but also because people come to us and say, who do I call, and what do I do, and what's out there? And with this time of change, it would be really great, if possible, for us to have a refresher and then maybe get a report a few months later on how it's going, if that would be possible. And last but not least, I'm in an organization, Topeka United, that does an annual Cal River float with kayaks on the river, and it is scheduled for this month, June 21st, a Saturday, and we actually have in the past and will be going from the input at the Weir through downtown and all the way through east Topeka to the Seward Ramp. And if anyone is interested, let me know. It's possible to sign up. There'll be a group of about 30 on that.
I have my hand over my heart right now because my heart is racing so fast because part of me is angry, part of me wants to cry. I can remember in 2017, when I came up with other activists, after Dominique had been killed, Dominique White had been shot by those officers. And I can remember coming to speak to the governing body at that time and saying, you know, there should be a requirement for training as far as when there is police shootings and understanding the ramifications as a governing body, et cetera, et cetera. And I even made some kind of lofty, naive, you know, you're all going to stay silent. Maybe y'all should just resign. That was lofty. I get it. I get it. That was, you know, an ego that didn't understand the complexities. But I'm also telling you this, I am totally fed up. Who the hell shoots somebody nine times in the face, man? Who does that? I don't care what, if you're the cop, if you're the criminal, who does that? And I can tell you just straight up to those that are listening in this audience and on TV, we don't get this kind of information. It's all a veil. The most you can get is when you hear gossip in the city. As an elected official, I'm not giving a shit the majority of the time when it comes to these types of egregious issues. So this is the deal. I don't know how this is going to look, and I'm really, because I feel so intensely as I see that young girl crying in the front, is that I will work with whoever I have to work to change things up. Because since 2017, I've been trying in my own small way. I've been trying. Since being on council, I've been trying for more transparency, to stop these lawsuits, even though we know they have the right to be defended. Have cops start getting their own insurance. And I do not know how this is going to look, and I did not know I would feel so emotional. But how can you not feel emotional when you know somebody was shot nine times in the face? If I'm wrong, city attorney, I hope you will let me know. But I'm going to start pressing for more questions, and I'm going to start pressing for more questions from the city attorney and from the city manager. And I'm going to start talking to the assistant city manager, Avery Moore, and the police chief to get a handle on this. Because this is out of control. Thank you.
Counselwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't going to say anything, but I will say something. We, as council members, can go back and we can review these policies, and we can ask if they be brought back. And that is true. We don't get all the information that the public thinks that we get. And we do have to follow the law. And I will follow the law. And I'll tell you why. I don't care whether anybody that don't like what I have to say are rolling their eyes. Because every family, and this takes me back to the Lamas Brothers. Let's go way back then. Because, you know, I've heard, well, you don't care because brown people haven't got shot. The Lamas Brothers did. They were at their home, just celebrating. Celebrating, and if, in my family, you get, just my immediate family, you think it's a crowd. There's 20, 30, just their immediate family. They had nine siblings. They had their wives and then their kids. So, yeah, it does look like a gathering. They weren't doing anything. They were at home. They were drinking. They got shot in their own thing. You know, I've had people come to me and say, well, we didn't say anything because they didn't ask us to say anything. But we're all in this together. They didn't come forward because they tried to do it on their own. But, you know, to me, it doesn't matter. Michael Jackson was right. It doesn't matter if you're black or white. It doesn't matter. We're all human beings. It does. And I'm born and raised from Topeka. I ain't going nowhere. It hurts me to see Chris Kelly's son. It hurts me deeply. It's a personal thing with me. Because my son went to school with his dad. And his dad would come up and hug me. So that hurts me. So I do have some investment. But we also have an opportunity to go back and revisit those. And I'll look at those to see what needs to be revisited that's good for all of us. It bothers my heart because I don't understand how somebody can get shot 34 times. I've had that talk with my grandson, that if you're pulled over, what to do and how to do it and why to do it. And don't say nothing. I've been in a car with my godson that a police was arrested. So I do understand. And we are limited, and there are guidelines. So I did sit on that committee because I was asked, one of the people that was asked along with Councilwoman Hiller and then the mayor, we did. There was people that could have sat on that committee that were asked, that were denied because they didn't want, that publicity, that doesn't hurt me. Because in taking this position, you got to make some hard decisions. So I too, I've never heard about somebody getting shot. I didn't hear about that. I didn't hear about it in the public. I didn't hear about it in the media. And now I do have some questions. So I will. But I will stand firm and do what I believe, what Sylvia believes is right. Because I don't want it to hinder any family member that has been wronged. I don't want my position to hinder any family member that has been wronged. Because they have their due diligence, and they have their day in court. And I don't want to intervene with that. Because I'm not an attorney. I'm not a legal advisor. I'm not a para. I'm not any of that. So when I step back, it's for those reasons, because there is a process for them to have their due diligence in court. And to have what's rightfully due to them if they were wronged. And I want to say thank you, and I want to say to the people that have lost their loved ones, that I'm sympathetic to that. And I apologize. You know, I know a lot of people in this community. I wanted to go to Deacon Kelly so bad and give him my sympathies. But because of the position that I sat in, I didn't do that. Because you know why? Because people are going to take it the wrong way. I'm just an elected official. Yes, yes, oh, yes. They would have took it the wrong way, that I'm an elected official trying to get points. And that's not it at all. I didn't want to take that away from him or take that away from any family member. And yes, there are those people, just like when I get done and say what I'm saying, that are going to say that I said it for my campaign and political reasons. And they can say what they want to. But at the end of the day, my God knows my heart. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It's been an evening of heartfelt testimony. And all that testimony must be taken as it was given, with the intent to try and bring some common ground and justice to things that are happening in our community that we have limited information on it many times and limited ability to act upon. But it's important that we have that kind of communication. So we get to understand everyone's perspective. That goes both ways. From those who have been harmed, and for those of us who are really honestly trying to do the right thing. So I can speak confidently about the people I sit with up here. And they are not in any way trying to deny justice to anyone in this community. So I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, because we know some of the things, a lot of things we don't have privilege to because of the limits of our position in the community. But our position in the community is that we represent our constituents. And for me, that's everybody in the city, not any single district. So again, I appreciate the information being brought to us. I appreciate the respect that goes back and forth as we move forward. Because that's the only way we're going to get there, is with mutual respect, not anger and hate. It's going to be mutual respect is the only way we're going to get forward. So I thank you all for participating in this evening's meeting. And now, we'll move on. I'm sorry.
Mr. Banks is going to get his turn.
Pardon?
Mr. Banks is going to get his turn.
Oh, I'm sorry. It went through here. Let me finish, though. Again. Boy, I'm going to miss him. Not always interjecting at the most timely time. I will defer to Councilman Banks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, just speaking to the families in our community, it would be, we would have to be blind to look in the audience and see the faces of especially the young people that has been affected by some of the things that have happened. Having worked in the city on the fire department, and I worked hand in hand with police officers, so I've never had a situation where I felt unjust. But three weeks ago, my son called me, who Ms. Lassiter knows very well. He got stopped by a block from his home, and he called me on the phone while the officers approached his car. And he said, Dad, I'm scared to death. I mean, I have never felt that way. I'm not from Topeka. I'm from Chicago where you know you're going to get mistreated by the police officer. It's a given. For us as young people growing up there, we knew. But when we look in the faces of people that are coming to this body and mentioning how things are, how they're seeing things that maybe don't get to us like it should, it makes it clear that we need to do something. It makes it clear that in many cases, our hands are, they're not tied. Because if we know of a situation, certainly we have people that we can talk to to maybe not get the progress right away, but certainly some steps toward change. I see kids out there right now, young people that I've worked with in the school system on the fire department, probably the parents that, victims, probably work with them also. I would just like for those that have come before us tonight, the people that are in our community, is that we're not blind. We've started a process with new people, hoping for change in our police department. And I know that those things are not going to happen today, tomorrow, or the next day. But we've got to start somewhere. And I think that we've started the process with the new chief that has opened the door to be able to talk to him. I mean, we can't change those things that, we can't bring back those things that have happened in the recent past. But we can certainly work toward those things, not continually. So we feel you. And we will do what we have to do in order to have a progressive police department in our city. Thank you for all of you. We feel you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me talk. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move now on to the rest of the business of the body. And there is a need for two executive sessions. So if the city attorney will read.
The motion would be to recess into executive session for a time not to exceed one hour to discuss personnel matters involving individual employees allowed under KSA 754319B1. The open meeting will resume in this room in the city council chambers. The following individuals be necessary to eat the governing body's discussion. City manager Perez and anyone else the mayor or governing body deems necessary.
Okay. Heard the motion. You need a motion from the body to move into session?
Move.
Okay. Moved by Councilman Dober, seconded by Deputy Mayor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One noted. We will go right into executive session number two. Okay. No action has been taken. No further business coming before this body. The meeting is adjourned. Dun-dun.